So what are we trying first?
I think I'm gonna go with the Oxtail.
You know, we gotta start with the Oxtail.
First you have to get the gravy on the rice.
They don't give you that.
This is $2 right here worth for gravy. Just so you know, certain places charge you $2.
It's extra.
I'm not going to call you guys out. But certain places are charging $2 for Oxtail gravy.
Oh, man. Wow. That looks amazing.
Yeah, it does.
What's up, guys? It's Ish. I'm here in New Rochelle, New York, outside of Crave, a New York eatery with Chef Chrissy and my homegirl Brownie. Chef Chrissy is a Jamaican native, but what he does is not native to what Jamaican cuisine really is.
We wanted someplace inviting for everyone to come and try Caribbean culture.
This food has been literally mind-blowing since the time I've gotten here. And I'm really excited to show all of you what we got. Y'all already know the vibe. Once the Jamaicans link up, it's a good time. As you know, good food, real talk. My guest tonight is the one and only Kevin Riley. Born and raised in the Bronx, New York, Kevin is changing and giving the kids of the neighborhood he grew up in what he was always looking for. Now, as a councilman, he's ready to change it up and mix it up.
I'm transparent. I want to be as open as possible.
Join me on Dinner with Ish. Let's go. Chef Chrissy? Thank you so much for having me, man. I appreciate you.
Absolutely welcome.
You made a makeshift kitchen just for us.
Yeah, I did. I had to make a makeshift kitchen. You know, when we're ever doing something in here, it just gets so crazy in the back.
You've got a lot of people in here. It's crazy. It's bustling, so I'm sure the kitchen's crazy right now. So I know we are going to be meeting with Kevin Riley. He's a councilman in the Bronx, from the Bronx, but he's also a Jamaican.
As I am.
As you are.
A proud one at that.
A proud one at that. So I had to give him a taste of the islands on his Dinner with Ish episode. So I know you said you wanted to show me one of the dishes that you're gonna be serving tonight, correct?
Yes. So one of the dishes I'm gonna be serving tonight is one of our bestsellers here at Crave. I'm gonna show you how to make a pepper shrimp crave way.
I've had pepper shrimp before.
But crave way is a totally different ballgame.
What's the difference about the crave way to the regular island?
The regular islands, we use head-on.
Right.
We're doing just tail-on, so it's a little easier to work with. Because we're trying to do something as fine dining as it can possibly be.
Okay, okay. I love the fact that you're laughing at that. You're like, fine dining, but still rugged.
A little rugged and rough. So I'm gonna show you how to make it, and you're gonna make it yourself today.
No, I'll help you make it. I'm not gonna make it.
All right, so a makeshift kitchen where we have, we're gonna go with a little olive oil and we're gonna go with a little miripot of scallion, onion, and bell peppers. And then we're gonna add in the Scotch bonnet pepper, which is where we have in here. So we don't have you messing up them young man eyes, you know? I don't want you rubbing them eyes.
So this is Scotch bonnet right here?
Yes. That's a mixture of...
Oh, my God. You can see and if you could smell a Scotch bonnet pepper, it stings the nostrils, man. It's amazing. As Chef put me on game into what it takes to make his famous pepper shrimp, he broke down how being a proud Jamaican influences his culinary creativity, while his hopes of keeping the BX on the map keep his drive alive.
I've always wanted to aspire to be a great chef and a great restaurateur. And I always wanted to showcase what I can do. And once I started it, you know, I realized that nobody was really showing off Caribbean food, Jamaican food at a high note, especially that my wife is a Bayesian, we're from the Bronx, and we wanted someplace that we can go, right? So when we started that, we wanted something really nice, something really sexy and inviting, that you can invite anyone here to eat. And we designed it to look really amazing.
So you guys wanted something that really spoke to not just Jamaican culture, but the high-end culinary world as well?
Yes, and we wanted someplace that was inviting for everyone to come and try Caribbean culture.
Okay.
You know, so this was the direction me and my wife decided to go in. So far, it's been a joyride.
So you're just gonna top that over there?
So we're gonna just top that. Top that.
My mouth is watering.
And then normally, before we send it out, we julienne some bell peppers and some green onion.
Okay.
And we just put it on a little ice, so it gets curly and just looks gorgeous on the plate.
Wow, that looks beautiful, Chef. This smells amazing, Chef.
Yes.
I don't even need a fork right now. I just wanna dig into it.
Dig into it.
Chef, this smells amazing. Look at this. So good.
How's that?
It's spicy, but it's not...
But it's pepper shrimp.
It's not overbearingly spicy.
This is one of our bestsellers in here, and we go through loads of it.
I can see why. I'll let you take over. I'm really excited. I'm really excited to have Kevin here, and I'm really excited that you're the one preparing this meal, man.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, let me go get ready, Chef.
All right.
Kevin, thanks so much for being here, man.
My brother, man. How you doing?
I'm good, bro.
I'm glad I'm here, man.
I appreciate you having to sit at the table with me, being a part of Dinner with Ish, man.
Of course, man. Thank you for having me. It feels good. It feels good. I had a very long day as being a council member in New York City, but it feels good, like, just to sit down and kick back.
So I think one of the first things we should do to get started is have a little beverage.
Okay.
And, you know, being from where we're from, we're gonna start with something...
What we sipping on, man? What we sipping on?
Something brown. We're starting with something brown.
We can sip on something brown.
I bet. Let's see. I got a special guest to bring it up for us. Think you might know this guy. Let me see. Where's he at?
Okay, okay.
Oh, there he is. What's up?
Drinks on me. Drinks on me.
Ladies and gentlemen, shout out to DJ Maddow.
DJ Maddow, man.
What's up, bro?
Love, love.
My partner in Music Over Violence, man.
So you guys do Music Over Violence together?
Yes, yes, yes. Our organization that we have in our community is Try to Stop Violence.
Okay.
That my brother DJ Maddow actually brought to our attention. Me, our sister Giovanni, and our team in Music Over Violence.
Wow.
To stop the violence in our community, so we definitely want to come together and end the violence and give our youth another platform. So Music Over Violence, this is the Northeast, baby. And we want to take care of our community, but we can't do it without our community by our side.
We gotta protect each other. We gotta love each other. We gotta spend money with each other.
We do a Juneteenth event every year, so make sure you come out this year.
Oh, yeah, this year. Ish, you gotta come get some jerk chicken, man.
Bro, listen, y'all know I'm a Brooklyn boy, but I'll come uptown, you know what I mean?
Nah, most definitely, man. Most definitely.
So, bro, thank you so much for coming through. I know you gotta run.
Love you too, brother. Appreciate you. All right.
Yo, so let's sip on this and let's get started.
Cheers, my brother.
Cheers, bro. So Kevin, man, listen, bro, you've been having a kick-ass year. Like, you've been having a couple of kick-ass years.
It's been a couple of crazy years, man.
Since 2020, man.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, dealing with a pandemic, a special election.
Correct.
How was it been, man?
It's been challenging. The special election was something that came to us out of nowhere. Because we thought we were running the following year, which was last year, for the current seat I'm in. It was a special election in my district, and we had to come up with an election under a month and a half.
Wow.
And the special election actually took place three days before Christmas. So we had to get people out to vote. We had early voting, which started 10 days before the special election on December 12, 2020. But it was still challenging to get people out there to actually vote three days before Christmas, so...
I mean, but they got out there and they voted. You won by a landslide.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, there was like no 50/50. There was no...
We went from... That's what happens when you're from actually the community you represent. So I was born and raised in the 12th District.
Right.
It's my area. It's my community. It's my home.
And for those that don't know, with the 12th District...
So the 12th District is really the Northeast Bronx Uptown, we call it.
Okay.
If you're from Uptown in the Bronx, I usually fight with my Harlem people because they go Harlem's Uptown. Like, Harlem ain't Uptown, man. How you... You Uptown. New York City's a town. So when you Uptown, that's all the way in the Bronx. And like, I'm at the border of Westchester. So I'm right there by Mount Vernon. We're not too far from New Rochelle. So we're right at the border of Westchester, so we're Uptown. So when you're from Uptown, you know, you're raised with a different type of swagger, a different type of belief. But it still was a lot of things I had to go through in my life to become the person I am today.
You know, I think that's awesome. That's really interesting. But, you know, speaking on the election, like, it was a special election for a reason.
The last two members, men that came before me, something happened where their seat was taken away from them. So it puts on a lot of pressure, and that was one of the stigmas that I had to be faced with when I ran for office.
Yeah.
A lot of my opponents were actually utilizing that against me.
Yeah. In what way?
It was really challenging. We're just kinda saying, hey, do we need another man to actually take this opponent? Because right now, city council is actually, the most women we have ever elected is majority... City council is majority woman right now.
Yeah.
We have over... We have 31 women in city council, which is the most we have ever seen within our life. So it gives us a different chance and opportunity to see women leadership. But within our district, within 12th District, I felt like I was the best person for the job.
Yeah.
Because I was from the community. I have children in the community. I'm raising my children in the community. I worked in the community. I lived in the community. So I have a stake within the community, and I really wanted to make sure that, show my community that I can represent them the right way.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that. And to be quite honest, I'm sure the people that voted for you appreciate that as well.
Yeah, I hope so, man. I hope so. I got two more elections, so I hope so.
So going back to that time, right? And I really wanna like speak on that, because that must have been like so... That must have been such a great feeling to win by such a large amount of votes. Like, we're talking about 75% more votes went to you, Councilmember Kevin Riley.
Correct.
What did you think at that moment when you saw that?
I wasn't really thinking about the votes or the landslide. I really was... I was overwhelmed that so many people believed in you. Because when you're a young black man, growing up in New York City or just growing up in America, you don't feel like people believe in you. You feel like you're destined for failure. So when you actually see people actually believe in you and you're representing the community that you're actually from, it uplifts you, it empowers you. It really feels good. I really spend my time and my day to empower people, enhance people's abilities. I really find joy within doing that, because I feel like people just need that uplifting spirit within them. So when... I was a mentor for my brother's keeper, President Obama's foundation that he started when he was the president.
Yeah.
And we have chapters in New York City.
Right.
And the motto that they have is, "I lift as I climb." And why I was able to become a council member is because somebody who came before me, which is my boss, my mentor, Carl Hasty, who was somebody that kind of put me in that direction and uplifted me, him and Senator Bailey. So just having people that believe in me in my community. So when I... That day, I was... I couldn't even express the joy.
Yeah.
I remember going home that day. I was there with my fiance, my wife now, but she was my fiance at that time. And I just sat on my couch, and I was just in awe.
Yeah.
Because I was like, people really believe in me.
Yeah.
So having that feeling is just a great feeling.
You speak about your mentor. What were his words to you after you won?
Every time I talk about Carl, it brings his smile, because he believed in me. Black men, men of color, we don't get affirmation unless we're able to provide something. So when you get affirmation from a man of his stature, that a man that I viewed as being a successful man, he's from a community, he represents the community, he's just like me, he dresses like me... Well, not too much like me, but he dresses as close to me.
He don't have the swag, you know what I'm saying?
Nah, Carl got his own swag, man.
Listen, viewers at home, he's wearing Jays right now. He's wearing...
I usually don't have this on. I usually be regular.
Your Jays are matching a tie, bro.
Yeah, I usually be regular now, but he had a swag to him that gravitated me to him. Him and our former borough president, Rumadiz Jr. And they had a swag to them that kind of drew me into politics. Because growing up, I was confused. I didn't know what I wanted to do growing up. My mother wanted me to be a lawyer, so I went into school, politics, economics, and law. And then when I joined the fraternity, I was able to, you know, network, meet different people, and actually get to meet him. So he was proud of me. And when he was proud of me, I realized that I did something and I accomplished a real good goal within my life.
What did he exactly say to you?
"I knew you could do it. I knew you could do it." And I doubted myself so much. I doubted myself so much. And with my oldest daughter, Brooke Riley, she's about to be seven this year, and I always talk about having confidence in herself. But then I know where she gets it from, because I doubted myself so much growing up because of things I've been dealt with. Me just doubting myself, failing certain times in my life, thinking I'm not good enough. So you doubt yourself sometimes. So when he said, "I knew you could do it," it just re-instilled something in me, like, you should believe in yourself more, Kevin. You actually could accomplish something. As long as you don't be arrogant. You're not arrogant. You're not ignorant with it. You're not being too cocky with it. Just believe in yourself, have the confidence. It's something that's hard. It's hard for a lot of people, especially when you go through mental health and really figuring out things for yourself, so...
Do you feel like Mr. Hasty kind of filled that void that you had growing up?
No. I don't think anybody could fill the void of Balfour Riley, which is my father. That's his name. He has a real Jamaican name, Buffalo. That's how they pronounce it. Buffalo. I don't think no one could ever fill the void of my father.
Yeah.
I love that man to death. I understand the situation. I actually got to see him for the first time after 20 years, a few years ago.
Yeah.
And we had a real long conversation. I needed that to heal.
Yeah.
I needed that to heal, just to hear what happened, hear his point of view.
Yeah.
But no, I don't think he filled that void of a father. I think he filled that void of just getting affirmation from a strong, powerful black man within my community.
Wow.
Which is something I feel like a lot of us need. We need affirmation. We usually talk down on the youth. Usually see something that the youth do, and you're just like, oh, man, he's horrible. He's wearing his pants by his butt. He's talking loud in public. He's just being rude. But you don't know what's going on at home. You don't know if he has that guy. And so just having somebody that believed in me, that don't know me, don't expect that out of me, I'm not giving him anything, just having someone believe in me is something that really uplifted me.
Well, listen, man, I'm really happy you're here. I'm happy that...
Thank you, man. I appreciate it, brother.
You know, he was someone that impacted you so much, so, you know, like, cheers to him and cheers to you, bro.
Cheers to Carl Hasty, man.
This brown water is kind of getting me a little sweaty, so if you guys at home see me dabbing, it's not necessarily me.
You have to be like me, man. I don't know what I do, but my body never sweats. I just... It's Aquaphor. It's Aquaphor, yeah. Just put it all over.
Yo, that's a little different, man. My daddy Indian, so you know. For me, it might be more of a like a Vaseline.
My uncle used to go to school, my mother used to douse our face with like Vaseline. You could see a reflection in my face. That's how bad he used to be.
Are you getting hungry?
Oh, yes. Yes.
I'm, uh... Speaking of the devil.
How you doing, my brother?
How you doing, Kevin?
How you doing, Ken?
Do you guys know each other?
Yeah, man. That's a valley mob, man. This is the valley here, man.
Look at that. Look at that.
So welcome here. I'm gonna give you guys a treat.
Thank you, Chef.
So here we have lobster crab spring roll.
Okay.
I like the crunch on it, and my daughter wanted something different, and I came up with this.
Okay.
So I made that for that little love of my life.
All right.
And here we have one of our great staples. These are some homemade lamb meatballs with about five different herbs and spices. Pinch of curry, a pinch of this, a pinch of that. You know, we always have the Scotch bonnet flavor in the background.
All right.
Enjoy. It's a pleasure.
Thank you so much, Chef. We're gonna talk to you a little bit more, Chef, but I appreciate you. Wow. All right, Kevin, so I think we should dig into the lobster and crab first.
I think so, man. This looks really good.
Do you use forks or use your hands?
Well, I think this is more hands on, you know?
You know, we're from the islands, right?
I think it's more hands on.
So let's grab one of these right here.
Okay.
So, uh...
Get a little sauce on the side on it, yeah.
Oh, my God. My glasses are steaming up. Let's shake this bad boy out.
This is a good thing, man. It's like bringing the Caribbean.
It's a good thing, man.
This is a good thing, man.
I saw that little like finger lick, bro. Yo, everyone in your district right now is like, yo, this is amazing right now. Seeing a councilman enjoy himself, like, this is dope.
It's good. It's like two different cuisines in one. Usually when you think of egg rolls, you're willing to go to a Caribbean restaurant for egg roll.
Yeah.
You don't go to a Chinese restaurant.
Yeah. And a lot of people try to do this, but I think he nailed it.
Yeah, this is really good.
Yeah. I'm gonna take off my, uh, my little...
Oh, yeah, yeah. So you can dive in.
Yeah, yeah, you know, because I'm sorry...
You can dive in the meal.
I'm sorry, people in, uh, at home. Y'all like the sweater? Y'all gonna see the tattoos today. It's happening.
This is good. This is really good.
Oh, man. Wow. Are we gonna finish it before we move on to the next course?
Well, you know, I wanna save my appetite. I don't know what else is coming out next.
I mean, you work out every day.
I mean, no, I didn't get to work out today, so, you know, I have to preserve my calories.
All right, so you could eat a little bit more, work out tomorrow.
You're right.
So are we finishing it?
Might as well. We only got two more left, right?
So I'm gonna move this out the way.
Of course.
Okay. And then we have the, um...
The lamb.
The lamb.
He said five different herbs.
Yeah, put that on your lap. You're gonna need it.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Mommy ain't teach you about the little napkin on the lap?
Actually, I learned about etiquette after, actually, when I became a Kappa.
Really?
Yeah, they taught us like a sitting down and eating dinner etiquette. You don't really learn that growing up.
No, you don't.
Yeah, you don't learn that. I'm actually trying to teach my kids that now.
It's important.
Yeah, they'll be on the table eating, throwing their fingers and everything. They'll eat...
I still eat like that.
Yeah, but they use their fingers for rice. Like, they'll bring a rice and chicken.
So do I. Bro, so I don't know, like, you know about my full breakdown?
No.
But my mother, she's Trini and Venezuelan.
Okay.
But my dad, he's like, he's... I'm not West Indian Indian. I'm like real Indian. Like, my dad is from Bangladesh. So like, we eat with our hands.
Got you.
So it's like, you tell me someone eat rice with their hands, I'm like...
You see, this is why it's so important to teach different cultures within the school system.
Yeah.
So you can kind of understand that.
Yeah.
Because I think when you see that now, you think somebody has bad table manners. But you're not understanding, that's actually that person's culture that they actually eat with that. So thank you for sharing that. That's why it's so important that we have, we're teaching different cultures within school.
Let's dive into these lamb meatballs before they get too cold.
With the curry.
Yeah.
Okay. How you like? You like curry?
Do I like curry? You like jerk chicken? Nah. This is different, bro. It's like, I feel like I'm eating schwamas. Like, you know what I'm saying? I feel like I'm in the LES, at my moods, eating schwamas.
Yeah.
But I also feel like it's, um, it has that like authentic Jamaican kick to it.
It's that curry. Taste it. I love curry.
Chef! I'm gonna do this in one bite. A lot of people that don't follow you, a lot of people that are gonna start following you now, don't know that you come from Jamaican parents.
Yeah. My mother and my father both were born in Jamaica.
Yep.
My older sister, I have an older sister and a younger brother.
Okay.
My older sister was born in Jamaica. My brother and I were born in America.
Okay.
My father actually is in Jamaica now, and my mother and I live with the rest of my siblings here.
Okay. So have you ever been to Jamaica?
I've only been to Jamaica one time in my life.
What?
My mother never used to take me when I was younger. None more because she was working so much. It was difficult growing up. She, my mother was traumatized. She never wanted to leave like our house alone. Because we were in a home invasion one time. My mother's house was invaded. They took everything. So she never wanted to leave the house alone. So like, even that traumatic situation really shook our family and really kept us from, you know, experiencing our culture.
Yeah.
But yeah, I actually went to Jamaica recently.
And that's when you got a chance to like see your father?
Yeah, see, connect with him. I ain't seen him in over 20 years.
Okay. And what's the reason for that?
He was locked up. My father was locked up when I was seven. That was the last time he got locked up. And when he got locked up now, he was in jail and they deported him. That's when the three strikes rule came out with the Clinton administration at that time. Three strikes rule came out, and his last encounter with the police sent him back to his country that he came from.
So he got deported after getting arrested?
Yes, correct. So he actually, no, he actually spent time in jail.
Wow.
We used to visit him a lot. Then they moved into a different state, then they deported him back to Jamaica.
You were seven years old. My...
Correct.
Yeah, you were seven years. And you actually witnessed it?
Yeah, the last time I saw my father physically in my household was in handcuffs. So that image as a young boy, you know, growing up, you think that you're gonna actually go to jail too.
What do you remember?
I remember just the cops knocking on the door. It was two police officers from the 47th precinct. A precinct I actually work with today, so that's kind of funny. But just, you know, just putting him in handcuffs. I remember me just having tears on the top step. My brother there, my brother's next to me. I just said, "Dad." It's just heartbreaking. Like, I always go back to that image, especially me being a father today. I wouldn't, I don't wanna ever put myself in a situation where I can't be there for my children. So, yeah, it's hard. It's a hard situation. So it's like embedded in my mind.
I mean, it's crazy, because you actually said in an interview that you envisioned yourself behind bars a lot, growing up.
It was identity crisis, because you don't know who you are, and you're afraid. Because you're, you had, being from the Bronx, being from Uptown, you're forced to kind of live a certain way. And when you see that your father actually was locked up for living a certain way, you kind of think you're going down the same path, so, yeah. It was something that really was challenging for me growing up, scary. I found myself watching a lot of like prison movies, documentaries, things, because I really wanted to know what my father went through.
Yeah, what was happening.
Yeah, what was happening in his life, what he was actually experiencing, because he wasn't experiencing being a dad and being home. Even now, like I told you, I'm having a son soon in July. I have two daughters, and my son is coming in July with my wife.
Your first son, right?
Yeah, my first son. My first, my only son, because I'm done after this. I'm done after this.
Yeah, that's three, bro. That's a lot.
Hopefully, hopefully. My wife says he's done, so I'm done after this. But, uh, yeah, just experiencing what he experienced, because I wanna make sure I'm able to be there for my son and my son experience something different than what I experienced.
That's crazy, man. Like, it's like, you know, a lot of father, well, not a lot of fathers. My father left. But your father was taken away. So you went from having two parents until you were seven years old.
Well, no. He was locked up in and out from when I was young till seven. Seven was the last time he was actually out. That was his third strike. So I really didn't get that. But when he was there, it was, it felt so good.
He was a great dad.
Yeah, just to be around him. Like, he loved us. I mean, he really carried us around. I was his little mini-me. He used to dress us alike, like, it was amazing. I see, but you don't remember that. You know, you're three, you're young, you don't really remember things like that. So you see pictures, and that feeling comes back. It's like, you don't remember anything, but you'll see a picture, and that feeling just comes back. Oh, I remember that. That was a good feeling.
You know, it's crazy, as a council member, like, a lot of people would shy away from telling that story because they feel like that would depict them in a bad light.
Yeah.
Especially when running for office. And, you know, we're gonna get into what your goals are towards the end of the interview, but are you worried about that coming up?
No. I'm transparent. I want to be as open as possible. I feel like in politics, people don't believe in elected officials. You don't trust government. So the best way that you could trust a person is if a person's transparent with you. You can understand what that person went through and why that person operates the way they do. I think in life, we're too quick to judge people before we understand where that person actually comes from and their upbringing, their lifestyle, what they have to go home to every single day. I think that's important. So I try to be as transparent as possible, and I share my life experiences. And while sharing that life experience, you don't know if you will catch someone's interest and actually gravitate to what they're actually going to as well. So that's why I share my life, man. I try to be as transparent as possible. And I try Eight Mile myself. You know, like, in Eight Mile, when B-Rapper was rapping with Papa Doc? And he's like, "Yeah, I do this. Yeah, my friend shot himself, dude." But you couldn't say anything after that. So if I put it out there, what are you gonna say about me?
Facts.
You know what I mean?
That's such a great reference, bro, because he did exactly that. That's how he won the battle, right?
Yeah.
He was like, he put all this dirt out. So what you gonna say about me now?
And you have to win the battle within yourself, because you have to step into your purpose. In order to step into your purpose, you have to understand your past and what led you to this person that you are today. So I understand everything I went through in my life led me to this person I am today, so embrace it. Why shouldn't away from it? I'm not embarrassed. This is why I am the person I am today. So I'll share this with you to hope that you could actually fight through those demons that you possibly had.
You share your purpose, you talk about your purpose. You know, going from having a partner there to being a single mom, like, did, uh, Laverne?
Yes.
Did Laverne, um, play a part in you establishing your first?
Yes. My mother is the goat. Hands down, the goat. You know, when you talk about sports, you talk about the, my mother is the goat, the greatest of all time in my heart.
Yeah.
The sacrifice that died. I, I feel selfish because I didn't allow, we didn't allow my mother to have a life. My mother just knows how to be a parent. She just knows how to be needed. She never had the opportunity to have a life. You know, celebrate herself. We all want happiness and find peace. That's what we all want today. We all want peace. As the older you get, you want peace. When you're young, you want stupid things. You want a vacation, you want, whatever peace is, but you want a vacation, you want a new car, you want to go out and pop bottles. This was the things that I wanted when I was younger.
Right.
You want to be around the dopest people.
You know, uptown boys, they was fly, every color product company.
Yeah, you want to be fly, you want to be fly, but when you get older, you want peace. My mother's still, up to this day, I feel like she doesn't know how to have peace. She always has to do something. She always has to feel like people need her, because she's just, that's all she knows. And we do need her. We do, but I want her to have peace. She played a role in the man I am today. I would not be the man I am without my mother.
That's very real. You know.
It's powerful.
Yeah, as a black, as a black man, you know.
Strong black woman.
Exactly. Was it difficult for your mom raising a, a black man in the Bronx? Two black men in the Bronx?
Two black men in the Bronx, yeah. Because we were knuckleheads. Yeah, my brother, my brother probably more than me. My brother, I love him to death, man, but, um, we were knuckleheads. We were trying to figure out ourselves, identities. Uh, not having a male figure around on a daily basis plays a role into a young black man's life.
Yeah.
Uh, you're trying to gravitate to culture, entertainment, hip-hop. Those things raise you. You're not understanding, you don't have a, a older figure there, so you could kind of see what you're doing on a daily basis.
Let's dive into that shortly.
Oh.
Wow.
Man.
Let me, um, disturb you guys for a minute.
What in the hell?
We're going to finish your entrees. So, we have to show off with these. You see him grabbing for my plate?
I'm grabbing it, man.
Hey, 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 hey.
So here we are.
We can share, bro.
So here we are, right?
Okay.
The term "law of mercy" comes to mind right now.
Again, right?
Big mindset.
Big mindset, really big mindset. So these are some five and a half hour smoke ribs. We're a vertical smoker in the back. We smoke them, then we saute them in pineapple juice, and then we finish them off with a tambourine glaze and a honey from Westchester County farm is really amazing. It's just something different. You'll taste all the spices and here I couldn't do nothing. I know you wanted something special.
What, what is this, chef?
So this is, this is oxtail cut inch and a half, because we want you to get a bite of meat in a mouthful and it doesn't fall apart in your plate and you can't find it. So this is the way we do it. That's how we plate it up. It's just, you'll taste the original flavors.
Oh, my gosh.
This is a popular Caribbean Jamaican dish.
I'm gonna get you guys some shared plates. I'll bring out some sides that we're also famous for, and I'll bring you the traditional rice and peas also.
All right. Lord, you do not get this much oxtail.
You never get this much oxtail when you go to the restaurant.
Wow, wow, wow. Chef, who do we have here?
This is Brownie.
Oh, this is Brownie.
Brownie used to pick me up at school when I was a baby.
So y'all, y'all know each other?
Yeah, she's friends with my sister, my older sister that we were just talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, I did not know until Brownie told me, like, there was a connection there.
Correct, correct.
So what do we have here, chef?
We have the traditional rice and peas, because we have to showcase that. Coconut oil, coconut milk, and we use a small red kidney beans instead of the large one to make the rice just a little more colorful.
Okay.
And here we have a seven cheese mac and cheese.
And I'm sure it's gonna change people's perspectives on Jamaicans making mac and cheese.
I was just about to say that. I was just about to say that. You know, they say that Jamaicans gonna make mac and cheese. Let's prove them wrong, chef. Let's prove them wrong, chef.
Listen, I'm, I'm, I'm of Trinidadian descent, and you know, we have the infamous macaroni pie. But I will, I will give you my honest opinion, chef.
Uptown macaroni and cheese across between.
Uptown Jamaicans know how to make macaroni and cheese.
All right? BX.
This is good.
You ready to dig in, bro?
May I?
I think we should.
And we were just talking about my mother. My mother's the best Caribbean chef I have ever had in my life.
Wow. How's this food adding up? Does it bring it back memories? Is it making you feel like you're back home?
Yeah, of course, of course. I'm always eating, uh, Jamaican food. My district is overly populated with Caribbean restaurants, which I love, so I have so many different options to go to every single day. So it's, it's, it's an amazing feeling.
So what are we trying first?
I think I'm gonna go with the oxtail.
You know we gotta start with the oxtail, right?
First you have to get the gravy on the rice.
They don't give you that. They, they're man stingy.
This is two dollars right here worth of gravy. Just so you know, certain places charge you two dollars.
It's extra.
I'm not going to call you guys out, but certain places are charging two dollars for oxtail gravy.
Oh, man. Wow, that looks amazing.
Yeah, it does. Let's see, let's see. Let's get another piece up in there. Let's get another piece up in there.
Yeah, there you go.
All right.
There you go. I'm gonna do the same thing. I'm gonna do one more piece.
First you gotta get the rice with the gravy. That's how you know how the oxtail's gonna be.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Different spices in the oxtail gravy. This is really good. There you go. There you go. There you go. Can I get you twenty-five dollars now for the oxtail, please, sir?
Oxtail's easy twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five, medium. Medium, everywhere you go.
It's well worth it.
Spending a lot of money on this.
So, you speak about your mom.
Yeah.
You being a little bit of a knucklehead growing up.
Yeah.
How did you go from all of that to politics? That's a huge transition, like.
Yeah.
You went to Old Westbury, you became a member of Kappa Alpha Psi, you, you know, went to grad school, uh, I believe at, um.
Metropolitan College of New York. I had to get my masters in one year.
Wow.
So at that time, I was, uh, full-time dad with my fiance. Uh, so I had to, I was there all the time with my, my daughter. I was working, uh, three jobs. At that time, I was working full-time, uh, with the speaker of this New York Assembly Assembly Call Hasty I just mentioned. I was a district leader in the area, uh, which is a person that's really helping the assembly member in the area. And I was also working in a foster agency, New York Family. I was a skills coach where I taught foster kids, um, predominantly young black men or young Hispanic men, uh, life skills.
You know what's funny?
Yeah.
There's a little like stereotype about Jamaicans having mad jobs.
That was me.
You had mad jobs.
Since I was young.
Yeah.
I would work at, my first job was the library. This is how I really got into politics, because I knew I wanted to be a public servant. I always liked to help people.
Right.
And working at the library, you help people with, uh, various amount of different issues. Somebody may come in and want help with their application to be filled out, printing out the application. And at that time, you printing out a small application, maybe an ID or something like that. You're not realizing that you're actually helping out a person with a service. So it's public service. It's really just helping out people, uplifting people. So me doing that, and actually, my first job in politics was a block away from my first job ever, which was a library. So I was in the same predominantly, uh, community I was representing, which was on Gun Hill Road. Uh, and I was seeing people that I would see every day in the library. People that would come in for books, people that would come in to help me, um, print out the application. But these people actually were coming into the assembly member's office with actual issues. Housing issues, immigration issues, uh, education issues. So it's just helping them out. So yeah, man, just getting into politics, how I got into it is, uh, when I went to college in two thousand and five. Um, I saw a group on campus. Uh, they have varsity jackets. I thought that was cool. Uh, growing up in, we from uptown, man. You don't see, I, I watched State by the Bell growing up. I used to love Zack Morris, Slater, Screech. I used to love them back then.
Me too, bro.
Yeah, I used to love them. And the thing I loved about them was the high school concept. They had culture. Like, you saw varsity jackets. You remember when Slater was on the, I think Slater was on the football team. They had the football team jackets. So when I went to college, I saw these brothers on campus with their leather mits. I was like, "Who are these brothers right here?" The red and white leather man. Red was my favorite color. I'm like, "Who are these brothers right here?" And I got to learn the fraternity and sorority life, because we don't know about that in the hood. And you don't know why people stepping, wearing gold shiny boots, shimmying, doing all that. So you don't know about none of that.
Right.
You know what I mean? So when you go into college and you actually see that, it's like, what is this? That gravitates you to that.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
So let's speak about that. I mean, so being a Kappa really impacted you, probably helped you transition to what you're.
Correct.
What you're doing now?
Uh, we've done a lot of amazing things. Even when we were talking to, uh, Chef Chrissy, he shared that they're working with, and his wife, they, uh, they're sharing that they're working with the Kappas in Westchester. Uh, just doing a little, uh, more outreach out there. And the reason why I got into politics is because my fraternity brother, John Hicks, God rest his soul, uh, he was a journalist for the Daily News, New York Times, and he introduced me to my mentor. Uh, so he was, he uplifted me. And being a part of organizations more about networking. It's not really about the fraternity, the party life, things of that nature. It's about networking and actually doing something, uh, in your communities, giving back. That's the important part, when they help uplift the people. Because I tell you one thing, I would not be in politics today if it wasn't for Kappa Alpha Psi, because I would have never met Jonathan Hicks. He would have never introduced me to Carl Hasty, and I would have never knew what politics, how important politics was within our community. Because growing up, all the politicians we know were older white males.
Do you feel like fraternities like ostracize and, you know, exclude people that aren't in the same fraternity? Like, do they give people that don't have letters or colors an opportunity?
I do feel like they do, but I know on my yard, Old Westbury, we weren't like that. We included everybody. Uh, of course, you couldn't stroll with us or anything like that. I was just excluded from everything. But when you talk about including people into programming, including people into conversations, just hanging out with people, we weren't snobs.
I'm not even talking about it like that. I'm talking about more so like opportunities as an adult, right? Would a person get a bias because they're not a part of the organization?
Oh, no. No, they don't care about that now. You don't care about that, because you just want to work with somebody that's a good worker.
So if two people came to apply for a job working with you, one's a Kappa, one's not, you'd pick the person?
I'm hiring the best person for the job. I can honestly tell you that. And all my brothers know that. I'm hiring the best person for the job, because you want to make sure that you're bringing somebody that's going to add to the team. Not because that person has a relationship or something in common with you. You want to add somebody that's gonna bring something to the team and uplift the team. And you can help uplift them.
If I may say something.
Yeah.
I'm not a Kappa, and, uh, I can tell you that a lot of the members of Kappa Alpha Psi Incorporated have been a huge part of my growth. And I appreciate you for confirming that, because a lot of members have helped me along my way with Dinner with Itch. You know, Ilbert J Sanchez, who was a, a guest on the show. Sean Forreal, who was a guest on the show, a very good friend of yours, and you know, one of the.
One of my partners is a dad gang.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You, you helped found the Dad Gang, you, Sean, and a few other people. And, you know, y'all have given me so many opportunities. I, I commend y'all, and I respect that brotherhood, and I, I know y'all don't exclude people, but, um, I just wanted everyone else to hear it from your mouth.
I appreciate that. I think when you.
And I appreciate you, bro, and I, I mean that shit for real, for like.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I appreciate all what y'all doing for the community, for each other, and, uh, it's dope. It's really dope.
Appreciate that. So, I mean, are we gonna dive into these ribs?
You see, the conversation's getting heated, so we forgot about the food a little bit.
We forgot about the ribs and the macaroni, so.
We should just grab it, bro. I don't even think we should, like, just, just grab it.
Let's do it, man. Let's do it. Let's do it. Let's do it.
Oh, man, get that.
I usually don't eat ribs. I usually don't eat ribs, man. I usually not a rib person.
Because you wear the suit?
This looks so good.
With a double Windsor?
Yeah, yeah. It looks so good.
Bro, go for it. You all right, Kevin? You all right?
Oh, man. Sorry, sorry. I'm so sorry, man. I got lost. You eat your bite. This is really good.
Yeah.
There you go.
I think I'm, I think I'm gonna dive in too. Let's get, uh, let's get the veggies off. Oh, man. And he said pineapple juice, bro.
He said he cooked it three times. Usually, that's how Caribbean people cook. I know my mother, she'll season something up, put it in a bag, throw it in the freezer, leave it there for three days, then cook it. Me, I'll put something out, clean it, cook it, season it up, and then try cooking right then.
This shit right here.
This is really good, though. You can tell he cooked it three times.
No. Bro. Super smoky, super tender. The sweet glaze from the pineapple reduction, this is so good. Wow, I'm looking my fingers at camera.
I'm sorry. I know it's not table etiquette, but.
Yo, it's all good.
It's really good. Oh, yeah, please, of course, I have to prove them wrong. Got you.
I heard Uptown got the best mac and cheese.
Oh, yeah, we do.
You know, you know, low-key, you know where I feel like I'm at right now?
Where?
I feel like I'm at somebody's, like, in someone's backyard.
It's happening there? We used to be at Beres playing.
Yeah, bro, reggae blasting.
Bob Marley and a red stripe right here.
Oh, my god.
You ever went to like a real, like, Caribbean, Jamaican, like, backyard basketball?
What kind of question is that, bro?
I'm just checking.
I grew up in Brooklyn.
I'm just checking. So you already know.
When y'all was hanging out with the Dominicans.
So you already know. You know.
Yeah, bro. It's a vibe. The only thing we missing right now is potato salad.
Yeah.
So you spoke about Kappa Alpha Psi. You actually became, um, one of the fraternity men of the year, back when you was an undergrad, right?
Yeah, in, uh, two thousand and nine. So I was the hallmark, which is the president of my chapter at that time. And that person is in charge of conducting, uh, chapter duties, uh, hosting meetings, events. When you're in an organization on the campus, you have to host a, a certain amount of events. And even at that time, I was working a job full-time. I was the chapter president, and I was also an R8. So three jobs again. So it was just.
Jamaicans.
So it was good. It was good. Um, I, I won for, we didn't really, we didn't win fraternity of the year though that day. It's like winning MVP when you win the championship. I really won the fraternity of the year that year.
But, you know, as a Kappa, you met one of your really close friends and one of the co-founders of the Dad Gang, Sean Williams, who was also on the show. How did that come into fruition?
So I'll tell you, uh, I met Sean, so I was always a fly cat, you know what I mean? From uptown, always wore.
Who's fly between you and Sean?
Me. Don't tell Sean. Sean, you see this? I'm playing, so I love you.
Sean be working out, bro.
Nah, I know, I know.
He be doing them thirty pushups.
Sean is, Sean is just fly, man.
Yeah, yeah.
Sean is just a fly bean. Some people dress fly, some people are fly. You know what I mean? Sean's just a fly bean, so I would say.
But you just dress better than he do. You dress better.
I would say I'm a fly bean too. I'll leave that to him. I'll leave that to other people to decide. But like, um, I met Sean campus, because Sean was into fashion. I saw him on campus, and he was so approachable. You know, when you, when, and the sad part is sometimes when, um, we get into positions where we're actually succeeding, or we get into, uh, spaces where we're actually popular, it's hard for us to accept other people coming into that space as well, and for people to view them that way. And Sean did not do that. He didn't. He accepted me, he welcomed me, he gave me jewels. Even when Sean started the Dad Gang, and I was a father starting out at that time too, he was like, "Hey, I know this is a great dad too. Let me bring Kevin to this. Kevin could bring something to the team as well." And I always loved and appreciated him for that, because he gave me tools and resources that he didn't even see. Because I didn't have my father there. So me becoming a father was like the scariest moment ever.
Hell, yeah, same, same.
Scariest moment ever. So you don't know what to do. You don't want to mess up. You don't want to traumatize people. I was watching a show the other day, I was with my wife, and we were just talking about, "Oh, man, we don't, we can't grow up and make our kids talk about us like this." "My father did this. I'm traumatized from my young life." I'm like, "You, we don't want that. You want to make sure that your kids are talking about you in a positive manner."
So with the Dad Gang, like, for those that don't know, they haven't seen the episode, go watch the episode.
Please do.
The Dad Gang has worked with literally some of the biggest things in entertainment, some of the biggest, you know.
My man LBJ.
Bro, LeBron James, Deion Sanders, you know, um, Fat Joe. You know, like, the Dad Gang has worked with some real heavy hitters.
Yeah.
You know, Walmart, you know, and, and Sirac, like, these are people.
Oprah.
Oprah, Steve Harvey. Bro, like, this is insane that you were part of something this great.
Yeah.
That you ultimately have to kind of step away from and step down from, right?
Yeah, correct.
Why?
Um, I'm a kid, city council member. There's a lot going on. So I represent, uh, district in the Northeast Bronx. I have to represent New York City. There's a lot that goes with that. I have to deal with a budget that's about a hundred billion dollars now.
Wow.
A hundred billion dollar budget. Um, so dealing with that, um, just being a council member and just my position now, I had to step back from the Dad Gang, but not really too much. Still have conversations, we still talk about events, uh, with each other, and we still communicate, so it's not really stepping away too much.
You actually a special guest and a speaker at their five-year anniversary. You actually are a special guest and a speaker at their five-year anniversary?
Yes, correct.
That I hosted.
Yeah. That you did a great job with.
Thank you, bro. Don't wake up my camera. That's my move. So, how was dinner?
It was amazing.
We cleared the plates, we got dessert covered?
Pork in a decade.
You ate pork for Chef Chrissy?
I ate pork for Chef Chrissy.
He has a head?
What is this, Chef Chrissy's?
You know, we gotta finish it off with a little sweets. So here we have some aged rum raisin bread pudding.
Aged rum.
Okay. These recipes are, they're modern. But the whole profile of where it's coming from, the origins of it is from our grandmother, great-grandmother. So that's what I do here. I call it a New York eatery because I grew up in the Bronx, I grew up uptown, and I grew up with Hispanic, Asians. My neighbor was like a Jamaican-Chinese. My other neighbor was Southern, and some was white, you know, and it went on Hispanic. So when we went to the supermarket, if you remember, we got?
Where, LLO Farm, you remember LLO Farm? Now it's called Palm Tree?
Top tomato, uh-huh.
SNY Grace, you know, my family, that Korean family. But try that and tell me how your afternoon and your night went, and some blessings to see you guys.
Respect. Thanks, Chef. You know, we gotta be a little toast in this.
Before we get started with the desserts, though, I got a few hot questions. Hot questions. Let's just try to keep the answers short and sweet.
I got you. I'll be different.
Short and sweet? A little something for dessert? So Mayor Eric Adams, I know that's someone that you've met, you've worked with, and that you hold to a very high regard. You know, very recently, he was under scrutiny for what he did at the Met Gala, calling out for us to stop gun violence. And a lot of people feel like he's stopping gun violence, you know, with people on the street, but is he really stopping gun violence with the people in blue? What's your thoughts on that?
I think he's trying to figure it out. At the end of the day, he's a former police officer, but he's been very vocal in calling the police officers out and NYPD out when they do anything that's detrimental to our community.
Do you think he's truly here for us?
Do I think he's truly here for us? Yes, I do. I think he's truly here for us, but he's just figuring it out. Being the mayor of New York City is not an easy job. Name me one mayor that people actually like in New York City.
Dinkins. I don't know.
Yeah, you know what I mean? And each mayor has to go through their own adversities, and he's going through his right now. We're trying to be as supportive as possible, but in order to be supportive, we have to work together. And that's something that I've been emphasizing with him, emphasizing with all other elected officials, cause not just city elected officials, it's state elected officials, federal elected officials as well. So we all have to work together.
Okay, cool. You speak about the?
But if you invite me to the Met Gala, I'm gonna come through styling. I'm gonna come through styling.
Probably in something, you know?